Time now at 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council will come to order. Tonight's invocation will be given by Jean Ammons, Pastor of New Beginnings Church.
Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time. We ask that you would grace our presence here with your presence, oh God. And we pray, Father, that you would bless this time, this meeting. Father, we thank you for this city. We thank you, Father, for these leaders you put in our city. We thank you, Father, for the peace that you bring us. So bring unity and peace to us tonight. I pray, Father, you give us wisdom, you give us direction, guidance, and I just ask you, oh Lord, that you be glorified in our midst. In Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Tonight's pledges will be given by a very special group. Councilmember Spiegel is going to introduce them.
Yeah, we have the part of, we're missing two or three players, but these are your Denison Ladybugs, your U-10 girls team, and so they came to lead the pledge for us tonight. Our girls, let's face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, try again. Ready?
Honor on the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, girls, for coming. Appreciate you.
First up, we have our consent agenda.
Mayor Protem, I'd like a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Doty and a second by Councilmember Hender. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to our, we are going to introduce our new library director. Amy, I'm sorry. Amy Lay.
Mayor Protem and members of the council, I am pleased to present to you our new library director, Greg Mitchell. And Greg has over 25 years' experience in libraries and most recently served as the Director of Libraries at Texas A&amp;M Commerce, where he was for 12 years. He also has served on the Texas State Library System Advisory Board for two terms in Austin, and he has special interests that include technology and preserving local history. And so we feel like he is a great fit and new addition to our library team. We do have some staff members here from the library to welcome him as well, but I want to introduce you to Greg.
Welcome, Greg.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. The thing that I've noticed about Denison ever since I first set foot in the town is that I feel like I'm home again. It reminds me very much of where I grew up, and the people here are awfully friendly. So I'm looking forward to this very much, and I really want to thank Amy and Judd and all the rest who were involved with my hiring to give me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We're glad to have you.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to our public hearings. As a reminder, I know there's several citizens here who would like to speak on some of the public hearing items. Just to remind everyone, as our guidelines, your time is limited to three minutes, and if the person before you has already addressed your issue or said what you were wanting to say, if you'll just agree with the previous comment and we'll move on. So our first public hearing, item 3A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing and take action on ordinance enabling compliance with State House Bill 2439 and State House Bill 2497. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have two public hearings tonight for two proposed ordinances, items A and B. Basically, we'll enact temporary ordinances to supersede current city code with the legislation that was passed in regards to the three bills that are considered tonight. And I don't have the clicker with me. If y'all can slip onto the next slide. The first ordinance deals with HB 2439 and HB 2497. 2439 is in regards to exterior building materials. As the council is aware, this legislation passed and prohibits cities from regulating exterior building materials above basic building code requirements outside of historic districts and special architectural districts that were enacted before April 2019. And then HB 2497 expands kind of the appeals, who can appeal to the Board of Adjustment for decisions that are made at the city level. Both of these will go into effect September 1st, 2019, and so the ordinances are needed to take effect before then. We do have legal counsel here with us as well. Nicole, I know she's been involved in putting these ordinances together and helping not just Denison but the many, many other cities too who are responding to the new legislation. Nicole, if you have any additional comments.
I could answer any questions. The purpose of the ordinances is to have proper ordinances in place to comply with the September 1 deadline. We will then thereafter review in more thorough detail all the city's ordinances and any other applicable covenants to make sure the cities are compliant, but due to just the vast nature of the impending deadlines on all the cities we represent, we just wanted to make sure that temporary ordinances were in place to allow time to make the appropriate amendments at a length.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion from the council?
Mayor Protem, I move to adopt the enacting amendments to the city zoning ordinance and building code regulations providing for compliance with these state laws affecting materials used in the construction or renovation of residential and commercial buildings, rules, and proceedings before the zoning board of adjustment, providing for appeals and providing related directives to the city manager.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Doty. All in favor? Item 3B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance enabling compliance with State House Bill 3167. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. Again, this is another ordinance to basically remove regulations in current city code and replace them with the House bill that was passed. 3167 relates to the review time for subdivision plats, requiring that that review be completed within 30 days or there's an automatic approval for those plats. So the temporary ordinance will default to state law, and then we'll go through the process of actually revising our code to incorporate the new requirements. And I can answer any questions, and legal council is here as well for questions.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Public hearing is closed. Any discussion from council? Motion?
May I move to adopt the ordinance amending chapter 28 of the City of Denison Code of Ordinances by changing the zoning classification on a certain tract of land?
No.
I move to adopt the ordinance suspending application of ordinance provisions containing city subdivision ordinance as it now exists or as it may be amended, at conflict with the provisions of House Bill 3167, passed by the 86th legislator of the state of Texas, and direct city staff to process all plans and plots as defined in House Bill 3167 and pardon the provisions of House Bill 3167.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Greenleaf and a second from Councilmember Hender. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 3C will be to receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of such a subject property from light industrial to single-family five located at 1006 West Bullock Street in Denison, Texas. Mr. Medina.
Good evening, council. All right. Or not, let me see. All right, this is case number 2019-34Z. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from light industrial to single-family five. The property is near a largely and engaged in residential use. Current property is in use as residential. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval at the July 30th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Staff notified all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. No written comments were received. Staff recommends approval. This is the subject property here outlined in blue. And here it is on the zoning map. And I think that, yeah, that's it. So this is a public hearing, and staff recommends approval on this item.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Public hearing is closed. Any discussion from council? Motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to adopt the ordinance amending chapter 28 of the City of Denison Code of Ordinances by changing the zoning classification on a certain tract of land located at 1006 West Bullock, Denison, Texas, from its zoning classification of light industrial to single-family five district.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. Any? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Item 3D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from single-family 7.5 to commercial, located in 2527 Highway 691 in Denison. Mr. Medina?
Good evening again. This is case number 2019-49Z. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from single-family 7.5 to commercial. The property is on a major collector road which links two major arterial roads. The structure is currently vacant. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on the July 30th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Staff notified all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. One written letter of support was received, and staff recommends approval. Here is the subject property outlined in blue. As you can see, this is the old Red Cross Building adjacent to, I think it's a nursery next door. And here it is on our zoning map. So again, this is a public hearing, and staff recommends approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Name and address for the record.
Drew Landrum, 7411 Larchview Drive, Dallas, Texas, 75254. I represent the property owner here, and we purchased this Red Cross Building back in January. We were pretty surprised to see that it was owned, single-family, certainly since it had been operated as the Red Cross Field Office for the past five to seven years. So yes, we have a tenant ready to go in place just subject to final zoning change, so.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Thank you, Mr. Landrum. All right, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? Motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the ordinance amending chapter 28 of the City of Denison Code of Ordinances by changing the zoning classification on a certain tract of land located at 2527 Highway 691, Denison, Texas, from its zoning classification of single-family 7.5 district to commercial district.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Spiegel and a second by multiple people, but we'll take Mr. Crowley's. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Item 3E, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from agriculture to single-family ten located at 3310 Pecan Gap Road, Denison, Texas. Mr. Medina.
This is case number 2019-055Z. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from agriculture ten, I'm sorry, from agriculture to single-family ten. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at the August 13th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Staff notified all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. No written comments were received. Staff recommends approval. Here's the subject property. Near top left corner, you can see there's 75 for reference, and this is on Randell Road. And here it is on a zoning map. The applicant is also interested in plating the property. However, this would be the first step in that process. So this is a public hearing, and staff recommends approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? No one? Okay. The public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? Motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to adopt the ordinance amending chapter 28 of the City of Denison Code of Ordinances, changing the zoning classification on a certain tract of land located at 3310 Pecan Gap Road, Denison, Texas, from its zoning classification of agricultural district to single-family ten district.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hender and a second from Councilmember Greenleaf. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 3F, receive a report, hold a session, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of subject property from commercial to single-family five located at 116 East Morton Street in Denison. Mr. Medina.
This is case number 2019-048Z. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from commercial to single-family five. The area is largely developed as residential with some nearby industrial buildings to the south. Future land use plan designates this area as to be a neighborhood. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at the July 30th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Staff has notified all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. One comment was received. This is the subject property here outlined in blue. As you can see, there's that slight industrial over to the east, and then majority of the area is residential, residential use. And here is the property on a zoning map. At one point in time, this whole area was rezoned to be commercial. However, that just never really changed. It has been largely residential, continues to be so, to act in that way. So this is just rezoning. This property will help the owner develop it in a neighborhood fashion like the surrounding areas. And this is public hearing. Staff recommends approval.
Public hearing. Is anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move-
Mayor Protem, we need to close. Oh, I'm sorry. The public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? A motion?
May I move to adopt an ordinance amending chapter 28 of the City of Denison Code of Ordinances by changing the zoning classification on a certain tract of land located at 116 East Morton, Denison, Texas, from its zoning classification of commercial district to single-family five district?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Greenleaf and a second from Councilman Spiegel. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 3G, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of the subject property from local retail to single-family five located at 730 West Heron, Denison, Texas. Mr. Medina.
This is case number 2019-057Z. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property from local retail to single-family five. The Denison 2018 comprehensive plan shows this area to be developed as mixed use while encouraging the reuse of existing buildings. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at the August 13th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Staff notified all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. No comments were received. Staff recommends approval. Here's the subject property outlined in blue. Currently, there sits a vacant church on the property. And here it is on the zoning map. So as you can see, all the properties to the east are currently residential. Let's see. I think that's it. This is a public hearing, and staff recommends approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? The public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? Motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the ordinance amending chapter 28 of the City of Denison Code of Ordinances by changing the zoning classification on a certain tract of land located at 730 West Heron, Denison, Texas, from its zoning classification of local retail district to single-family five district?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hender and a second from Councilman Greenleaf. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 3H, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on ordinance finding the reasonableness of the cost of the demolition of a structure situated at 2301 South Austin Avenue in the city of Denison, Texas, to abate a public nuisance, levying an assessment of the cost against the real estate and assessing the amount of the cost for such demolition as a lien against such real property. Mr. Lay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, or Mayor Protem and Council, sorry. Got a couple of slides here to remind everyone of the structure that we are discussing here before and what the site looks like today. A timeline of how we got here. So the structure there was posted as unsafe on December the 12th, 2017. On March 5th, 2018, City Council ordered a demolition of the structure. On February 18th, 2019, a contract was awarded to EDRS, Inc., to complete the asbestos abatement and the demolition. On April 10th, 2019, asbestos abatement demolition began, and on May 30th, 2019, the demolition and asbestos abatement portions of the project were completed. So a breakdown of the fees. The contract with EDRS for the asbestos abatement and demolition was $171,600. The asbestos consultant, the asbestos survey, and the specifications totaled $17,725. Stormwater permits, controls, site stabilization, and inspections were a total of $3,703. The notification with the state of Texas regarding asbestos abatement was $3,307. There was a boundary survey of the site for $750. Total staff administrative fees, $638.13. So the total lien assessed, $197,723.13. Staff recommends levying a special assessment lien against the real property in the amount of $197,723.13. I can answer any questions for you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is William Shaw. I have an office in Dallas, or actually in Richardson, at 1117 Grassmere. Honorable Mayor Protem and members of the council, I represent the landowner as his attorney, and it is my understanding that the purpose of this meeting is to consider the reasonableness of the fees that have been charged for this demolition. It's also my understanding that the landowner himself offered to do this job for almost one-fourth, to do the demolition for almost one-fourth, but he never received a response to his offer. So I would urge the council that $200,000 to demolish this building seems like an unreasonable amount, given the fact someone else has offered considerably less, and I would urge the council to reconsider this before you enter approval for the amount that's been charged and also before you assess a lien against the property, which will necessitate having to take other actions to break the lien. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Public hearing is closed. Discussion from council?
Can anyone speak to the additional bid that was supposedly presented?
No, not to our knowledge. So that, if the property owner wanted to take care of the unsafe structure on their own, and they really had a time period from when they received notification of it being an unsafe structure until we started taking action at the city council level for that, and there was no action taken on the building to remedy the nuisance and abate or fix the unsafe nature of the structure.
If I recall, didn't we give a couple of extensions on this property to get things cleaned up? Am I incorrect?
Do you remember for sure, Robert?
So we have one, at one city council-
Come up to the stand.
So I can't recall the specific date, but in February of the same year that the order was given, the month before, the property owner did come forward, and y'all did give about a month to come back to the next council meeting with a plan for, at the time, rehab in the building. And of course, that didn't happen, so at that March meeting, y'all ordered the demolition.
That's what I recall, too.
Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Emir Almasri, and my address is 5641 St. Thomas Drive in Plano, Texas. And my wife and me own this property. And what he said that we came into the council meeting the first time, they sent us a demolition order or to fix it or whatever. We came in and we applied for a permit. The permit, three weeks later, before the council meeting in a week, got declined for no reason. They didn't give us a reason why they declined the order, the repair order or the permit. All of a sudden, we got nothing after that, and we hired an attorney, which he filed an appeal. Your guys said you never got the appeal from us, and all of a sudden, we didn't get any demolition order that they're going to demolish in April or May or whenever they started. All of a sudden, they're demolishing the building without our knowledge. So we came back to the city attorney, and we asked her if we can demolish it ourselves, and I tried to call him several times, left him so many voicemails, he never replied. So, and they demolished it, and now we're stuck with this bill, which is unfair. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Yes, sir, come forward and state your name and address for the record.
John Buchanan. I have a first lien on this property. And what I would be interested in finding out on the abatement of the property- And what I would be interested in finding out on the abatement of the property, I'm a certified, uh, embankment, certified nineteen ninety-five. I bought this building in nineteen ninety-three. And there was, I'd like to see their copies of the report where there's asbestos and stuff that was in this building. Because I owned that building for twenty-something years. And like I said, I'll be happy to show you my credentials and bring them to the city council. There's, uh, I've been in construction business for forty-five years. And let me tell you, I can, I can demo a lot cheaper than what you guys can get it done. And I just think it's an outrageous price. So, uh, I would like to see all those credentials and where they got their asbestos reports.
Those are all public record. We'd be happy to provide them for you for inspection. And I, I will say that a lot of the cost of this contract was related to asbestos removal, which had to be completed before we could demolish the building. That made up a good portion of the, I don't remember what the exact number is, but that was a good portion of the actual contract that, for the demolition, was the asbestos abatement. And that was, that contract was publicly bid as well, so there was plenty of opportunity for anybody to bid on that project.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay? Okay, Mr. Robbie, come forward. You don't mind?
In the law, where?
Yeah.
The law says for the demolition that they have to give us a required notice for us that they're gonna start demolition of this property, which we never received that. We asked for open records from the city. All open the record never indicated that they sent us something, they're gonna start demolishing this building. So I'd like to know what's, what's your stand for, how, how they start demolition without our knowledge or the lien holder. Thank you.
Oh, I'd, we'd be happy to provide the, the very large file that we have on this project with all the notifications and everything that's in there. I've inspected that along with other staff and we follow procedure according to our, our code. So we'd be happy to provide that for you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close this public hearing. Discussion from council. Motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the ordinance finding the reasonableness of the cost of demolition of a structure situated at twenty-three oh one South Austin Avenue in the city of Dennison, Texas to abate a public nuisance levying an assessment of the cost against the real estate and assessing the amount of cost for such demolition as, as a lien against such real property.
All right. We have a motion for Councilmember Spiegel, a second from Councilmember Hander. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, three I, receive a report, hold a discussion and conduct the first public hearings on the proposed tax rate. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Adams and Council. The truth and taxation rules mandate that a governmental unit publish a proposed tax rate and also hold two public, um, hold two public hearings on a tax revenue increase. The dates of the public hearings must be stated and the notice must be published. The proposed rate for tax year twenty nineteen is point six five two zero three four. This exceeds the lower of the effective rate, therefore requiring action. Notice will be posted and has been posted and public hearings will be held both tonight, August nineteenth, twenty nineteen, and then again on September third, twenty nineteen, at six P. M. in the council chambers at three hundred West Main. Adoption of the tax rate will take place on September sixteenth, twenty nineteen, at six P. M. in the council chambers at three hundred West Main. And Mr. Rex has some PowerPoint slides he would like to go over in addition to this information.
Thank you, Wagner.
Thanks, Renee. Did want to just give a brief introduction before the public hearing to what the, the tax rates that Renee referred to are. Our current tax rate is sixty-three, thirty-three, seventy-seven. Effective tax rate, which is the rate at which we would receive the same amount of property tax revenue as the previous year, is sixty-one, oh-two, six-three. The rollback rate, which we're proposing the rate go up to, is sixty-five, two-oh-three, four. It's a, would be a two-point-nine percent rate increase, just under two cents on the, on the tax rate. The new tax, new property tax revenue that, that would be raised by this levy is just over a million dollars, a million forty-five thousand, eight-twenty-eight. Most of that from existing property values increasing with about four hundred thousand or thirty-eight percent of that coming from new property, uh, new property on the tax rolls. With the, going up to the rollback rate, that would generate an additional two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue. And as we've previously recommended, we'd like to set that aside for street maintenance, which we, we sorely need here in Dennison. Did want to, of course, Dennison only makes up a, a small portion of our residents' overall property tax bill and so wanted to refresh our, our memories about that. Our sixty-five cents makes up twenty-five percent of the overall tax bill. The county and the college making up about twenty-two percent with Dennison ISD, ISD making up fifty-three percent. And these are proposed twenty-twenty tax rates that are shown here, not the current rates, but actually the proposed rates up here. And here's a, a table outlining those, those rates as well. With our, with our proposed two-point-nine percent increase and then the other entities decreasing their rate, overall, our residents are gonna see a four-point-one percent decrease in their tax rate between the four entities. And I did want to point out, I know we have some folks here that asked about our senior exemptions or other homestead exemptions that are in place. We're not proposing to change any of those. Those would remain in place. If you have an exemption now, you'll have it again next year. There will be no changes to that. Our, our property tax rate proposed for twenty-twenty, this shows the current tax bill and your proposed tax bill for next year based on different home values. Again, we're looking at overall of, of four-point-one percent decrease on the total tax bill that includes the four entities described before. The question is, why go up to the rollback rate? As you know, Senate Bill Two restricts our ability to increase revenue on existing property. That growth is limited to three and a half percent per year, which it's currently eight percent, so it's a, it's a more limiting factor for us. We do rely very heavily on existing values to grow in order to generate new revenue for us. And we have a lot of, we have low property values per capita, which I'll, I'll get into in here in just a minute, and a low property tax revenue per capita as well relative to other communities that we compare ourselves to. New property value, we know, comes from the economy being healthy, which it is right now. We hope to continue to position ourselves for growth in the future and generate new, new property and, and new growth. But we still rely very heavily on existing property values increasing in order to have more revenue. We also, as a result of SB Two, it does not factor in your interest in sinking fund or basically your general fund debt into the cap. And so cities like Dennison who have low debt in our general fund are kind of held at a disadvantage from that perspective. So while we do expect to issue some new debt in the, in the coming fiscal year, especially for street projects, that will, that will factor into things after next year kicks in. This graph just kind of shows us, Dennison compared to some other cities in terms of what our property values per capita are, and we're still very, very low relative to some of our peer cities, which are listed here. Anna, Salina, Clayburn, Gainesville, Greenville, Melissa Parish, Prosper, Sherman and Waukesha-Hatchee. We are the lowest out of all those communities, which translates into a relatively low property tax revenue per capita as well. So again, those are some of the, the reasons that we're recommending we go up to the rollback rate this year. Our INS rate as a percent of our overall rate is, is very low. Again, that'll change next year when we do issue some more debt for some major street projects that we have coming up. And ultimately, that will change, change the equation next year for us. These are those same communities, what their current rate is, what their proposed rate is. Overall, what we're seeing is most communities are, are going up to their rollback rate. In fact, on average, cities are going, these cities in particular, when Dennison's included in here, are actually going above the rollback rate and changing their rates as a result of that. So every community is a little different and, and it's hard to compare Dennison to other cities because it's just a different, different world. Every community is a little different, but this gives us some perspective of what other cities are doing to sort of mitigate the impacts of Senate Bill Two, which will hinder our ability to increase revenue in the future. As I mentioned, we are recommending that the additional two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that are levied towards our property tax revenue, we want to put that toward street improvements for next year. That will bring our total up to four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars that we'll have available to do micro paving and overlay and of other maintenance work on our streets. Part of our six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar annual allocation, a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand of that will go to the overlay and micro pave program. Combine that with the two-seventy-five and you get the four-twenty-two. We have sidewalk improvements budgeted as part of that allocation and then beginning next year, when we start the major transportation projects on Crawford and Loy Lake, Flora Lane, Waterloo Lake and Edwards Drive, those major projects will be, will take some of that annual allocation and put towards those major projects for the coming years. So we do plan on, as you know, council spent a lot of money on our streets over the next few years, especially tackling some of the major, major east-west corridors like Crawford and Loy Lake through Dennison. So we look forward to moving those projects forward and, and improving our streets. So with that, I can answer any questions and, and again, this is the first public hearing on the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Rex. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this item? Yes, sir. State your name. Come forward. Yes, sir.
Yes. My name's James Barnett. I live at eighteen oh one Woodland Park Drive. And my house is on the corner of Bells and at Dead's End Highland Park, Dead's End at my house. It's a one-block dead end. And I've been through the channels trying to get a car park, get my car out of the sun. And the people are nice and professional. And I go through the bases and I go to the gentleman after looking at two or three properties to build me one. And I found a one going out Pottsburgh. He can build exactly what I want for, uh, right at fifteen hundred dollars. And then I was told, at the nice lady upstairs said that I'd pay a fifty-dollar fee. She helped me out, but she then said, she helped me draw out 'cause I didn't, I had a brochure. Anyway, I'll try to hurry. Anyway, she said she would pass this on to the inspector. So, uh, I waited about three weeks, I guess. I never heard anything. And I left my paperwork and my brochures showing the property, the fees and the lien and my, uh, my driveway, coming out of my garage to the one block of Dead End Street, there's no traffic, there's only one house that can sit, twenty-five foot. My vehicle is right at seventeen foot. And when I called the lady, she said that the inspector came out and then I guess she tried to bottom line it real quick. I didn't, she said, "You don't have enough room." And I said, "Well, can you kind of define that?" Well, she really couldn't, but she said, she, and then the inspector walked up. Good. His name was Roger, very nice man, very professional gentleman. He said, uh, he said that your house at, at the carport had to be twelve foot from the garage. And that wouldn't give it enough room. But the way the man figured it, it was gonna build it, he says, "You have enough room." So just, I read this in the papers, reason I'm here to bother y'all now. It said that, it said that y'all left, it was that and then up on the building. So I said, "Well, I'm gonna do it." So here I am. And I, uh, I just needs to, I don't know, I've gone to three different departments about this carport and always they pass me on. And I guess some of you, our president, Harry Truman, God bless him, he had a plaque on his desk. It said, "The buck stops here." So I just thought I would ask you nice folks if, if, if there's any reason could I have to pursue this. I mean, are we on the kind of the same page? I'm a little bit nervous. No, I can tell by your kind of, I don't, you don't know either.
Well, what you're speaking of is a...
I can't hear you, I don't know.
Is that okay? Just, just give me your bottom line.
So we'll, we'll have to get you in touch with city staff that can help you?
Well, I've gone through two staffs already.
Two staffs, okay. Mr. Rex will assist you. Mr. Rex over here is our city manager.
I'd be, I'd be happy to meet with you and...
Welcome to Dennison, sir.
Thank you.
We've had a bunch of them. Well, anyway, I'm, I'm...
Well, we thank you for your time.
Yeah, I'll, I'll meet with you after the meeting. Thank you.
Can I step back down?
Yes, sir. Okay. Uh, with regards to the agenda item, is there any more discussion? Anyone else wishing to speak to this item?
Mayor Protem, one thing I was gonna ask city manager to kind of clarify just for the public, you know, we obviously are being pushed in this direction, right? Us and, and many, many other city governments around the state. But one thing I'd like to clarify, as big an agenda item and as high a priority as it is for this council to improve the roadways in Dennison, I do see a lot of public comment on social media, Nextdoor app, Facebook, things like that. There's a lot of confusion in quote-unquote "the public," our voting constituents. As far as to what roads we actually have, and we've talked about this at prior council meetings when we, when we introduced some of our overlay plans and the street road improvement projects, there's a lot of confusion over the, what roadways do we actually have control over? So when, when I see John Q. Public complaining about the fact that we haven't fixed seventy-five, for instance, I don't know how to convey to him that we don't have TechDOT authority to go out and repair an actual highway that's running through our city. Same goes for Highway ninety-one and Austin Avenue and Highway ninety, yeah, ninety-one, sixty-nine. So would you just speak to that a little bit as far as kind of where our, we know what our focus is, but I feel like, would you convey that to, to all of our taxpayers out there?
Sure. Great question and, and Dennison's both fortunate and unfortunate, I think, to have a lot of TechDOT right-of-way through our, our community. So TechDOT is responsible for maintaining seventy-five, sixty-nine, ninety-one, eighty-four, six-ninety-one. Pretty much any of our major roads are TechDOT right-of-way maintained.
Even Morton Street.
Even Morton Street, one-twenty, I forgot to mention one-twenty, one-thirty-one, fourteen-seventeen. There's a, most of our major roads are maintained by TechDOT. So we do work with them closely that, to identify problems and, and through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, help, help plan for improvements to those roads, but ultimately it's TechDOT that has responsibility for those. So if you have like the city of Dennison app on your phone and you do find a pothole in a tech, what happens to be a TechDOT right-of-way or something like that, we try, we do pass that on to TechDOT and help push them to maintain it and, and take care of that as well. Any, any of your neighborhood streets, you know, kind of our Loy Lake, Crawford, Park Ave... Avenue, any of your neighborhood streets, we maintain, but those major thoroughfares are maintained by TechDOT.
Which as you pointed out, from a budgetary standpoint, we would never be able to afford to maintain those right-of-ways. So it's a huge benefit to the city, but we do not dictate the timing in which they get overlaid or repaired.
That's correct, yep.
Anybody else? Okay. So I will close the public hearing. There's no vote on item I. And we'll move on. There is no executive session tonight. We don't have anything to discuss. So the time is 6:50. We are adjourned.